Okay, I'll call to order the October 16th, 2008 Santa Barbara Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Rodriguez, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bartlett.
Here.
Commissioner Justice.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Jacobs.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Vice Chair Larson.
Here.
Chair Myers.
Here. Okay, well, do our preliminary matters. Mr. Cotto, is a line missing here?
Yes, there is.
You're testing me, aren't you? Are there any continuances, withdrawals, or addition of ex-agenda items?
There's been one continuance. We were gonna have 124 Los Aguais on the agenda, it has been continued. We're looking into a sequo issue because of historic structure, and that's been continued indefinitely at this point, but we'll be having a meeting, I think, on Monday to talk about it, staff.
Thank you. Any further announcements or appeals?
Yes, I have two. First, 1298 Coast Village Road is going back to ABR on Monday. That's the project at the corner of Olive Mill and Coast Village Road. It was appealed to council and approved with some changes, and this is the first time that the city will have seen it since then. It would be nice if the ABR liaison could go. Now I know who that is.
That's Bruce. Mr. Bartlett.
Mr. Bartlett. And that is-
I'd be happy to attend.
It's tenement is scheduled about 4:40.
Great, thank you.
Second announcement, and Commissioner Jacobs reminded me of this. Last Tuesday at council, there was an item. In fact, there are two items at council. It was about hedges and the possible suspension of enforcement of hedges. It was brought about by a number of citizen complaints. Two members of council, Councilmember Schneider and Councilmember Francisco, brought it up to the full council. And after a lot of public comment and discussion among the council members, they decided, they forwarded an ordinance that would suspend enforcement of the hedge height ordinance for two years, accepting safety issues. And they also forwarded the ordinance committee sometime within that two-year timeframe to have a discussion about hedges and hedge regulations and what they should be. So, from a staffing perspective, I don't think, well, I know that we're not gonna get to it for at least eight to 10 to 12 months. But that's gonna be a fun one. There's a lot of different opinions about hedges in this community.
I know.
And lastly, also on that council agenda, the council had held a closed session on security, and it was a briefing by the police department on sort of what council members should do if, you know, there was violence in the planning commission meeting, like hostage situations, or, you know, they call it the shooter, you know, the Columbine situation. And I don't know if you know this, I'm not even sure if I should be saying this on TV, there are some evacuation procedures and such that we might go over at our lunch meeting or something like that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We have some commissioner comments. Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just realized, although I'm the ABR representative from Planning Commission, I had to recuse myself on the 1298 Coast Village Road because I'm doing work with that same applicant in another city, so it would be good if somebody that actually was here on the project at the commission could go to that meeting.
I'm your alternate, so Charmaine says it's Brusella. Sounds like an illness, though, but I'll go on November 13th.
It sounds like a Viking queen.
Like a Viking, well, a Viking and a queen. Thank you.
It's this coming Monday.
Ooh, October 20th. I thought it was in November.
No.
Oh, we do need somebody else to go. I know what I'll be doing, coaching, so, sorry.
Well, I'm hoping to make it, but I would like to see someone else also try to go. I've got a check schedule, but I'm gonna try really hard to make it. Mr. Justice.
I was wondering if Mr. Cotto could indicate the time again, next Monday?
So far, it's set at 4:40, and usually with the ABR, they run a little late.
Do we know where it is on the agenda?
Sorry, not the number.
Okay.
Okay, I would, I know I've got commitments up until about 4:15 to 4:30, but I can certainly coordinate with Mr. Myers-
Okay, let's do it.
-to make sure that one of us is there, so that this is covered.
Good idea.
I think it's important for the commission to have a representative there, and I'd be happy to take care of that piece if need be, and if there's, well, I'll try to take care of it.
Okay, so will I. Thank you. Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question just about the hedge ordinance. So, is the ordinance suspended, or enforcement of the ordinance? How does that work?
Chair Myers, Commissioner Jacobs, we don't know yet. But the way it was discussed, it was suspension, it was an ordinance, in order to not enforce, the city attorney said that there needed to be an ordinance that suspended the ordinance, and it looks like Mr. Vincent wants to clarify.
Oh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Cotto is correct, that the, once an ordinance is on the books, it's staff's job to enforce that ordinance as written. Staff doesn't have the prerogative to pick and choose which municipal code ordinances we enforce. And so, if there was a desire on the part of the city council for staff to suspend enforcement of the hedge height zoning limitation, they would need to adopt an ordinance basically of equal dignity with the hedge height ordinance that exists on the books that specified how they wanted that to occur. And so, it sounds that the discussion that the city council had was going down the road of authorizing staff to suspend enforcement of the hedge height ordinance for a period of time, as opposed to an outright repeal of the ordinance. Not, so that-
And would they then be approaching on a case-by-case basis, rather than, I mean, is that one potential substitution for the existing-
The only exception, no, the only exception that I heard Mr. Cotto discuss regarding the city council is that the suspension would not apply in cases of safety. And we'll have to figure out exactly how we describe which cases are safety cases, but I know for a fact that right now, there are differing heights allowed for hedges when they are next to right-ofways, driveways, and so forth. So, I presume that at least that section of hedge height enforcement would remain as part of the safety issue. The real question, I believe, that they're trying to get at is the hedge height that allows, those areas on a property that are allowed to go as high as eight feet, and which we all have experienced, in many cases, have gone much higher than eight feet. And so, that's the area that I understand the conversation is being held. Ms. Cotto, I think, may add more to that.
If I, if you don't mind, there was, it was, the safety part was primarily discussed was driveway entrances and exits. The whole idea was to suspend the three-and-a-half foot in the front, as well as the eight-foot in the sides, that height limitation. But where there are safety issues, mostly with the driveways, that seemed like, I think that's where we are gonna concentrate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I will open up the public hearing for items that are not on our agenda. If anyone wishes to speak to anything, please step forward. I don't see anyone, so I'll close that. And bring it to our first item, again noting that item number three has been continued indefinitely. So, our next item is a new item. It's the western side of the 600, 800 block of Milpus Street, C2 Zone District, general plan designation rezone. And Mr. Lawson will be our case planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, one minute. Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I need to announce that I will be recusing myself on this item. It was my project at 803 North Milpus, which triggered the discovery of the discrepancy between the zoning and the general plan that we're dealing with here, so that processing has been suspended until this issue is resolved. So, I will be stepping out and come back for the next item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bartlett. Mr. Lawson.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, thank you. I brought this project before you for initiation in June, and now we're back for our recommendation to council. The project area will cover the western blocks of 600 to 800 Milpus. Current designation right now is residential, 12 units per acre. Proposed designation will be general commerce. The area covers 25 lots between Cota and Campagito Street, 18 of which would be, are commercial right now, commercial use, and seven lots are residential. As you can see in general plan, on the eastern side of Milpus, entire length from Campagito south of the freeway is already general commerce. One block is major institutional, public institutional, the other two blocks are residential. And current zone district is commercial. The project area is in the bold dash area, and the Cs represent the 18 commercial lots. And this is another shot of the project area. We have San Antonio Junior High will be behind two of the blocks, and there's approximately two residential developments in these lower two blocks, and then the remaining six residential units are in the third block, access mainly off of Campagito and East Delagoa Street. Shows a 1964 general plan. At that time, the general plan designation was residential at 30 units per acre. 1974 is brought down to 12 units per acre. At that time, staff, after the general plan update occurred, citywide, staff took a look at the city, to see if there's any more cleanups that need to occur. In one package, staff went back to council and brought some updates to the general plan, including the Milpus area, when they realized that residential would not be appropriate for this area, and commercial would be more appropriate for the area zoned commercial. At council, there was a number of concerns in other parts of the city other than this area, and the council asked staff to go back and notice the neighbors throughout the city, and then come back with the noticing completed, but that never occurred, so we remained at this general plan designation. As you can see in this historical shot here, the commercial use has been in place along most of Milpus. Commercial development's been here from the next 1950s onward. And to orient you, here's Milpus Motor at the corner of Campagito and Milpus. And here's Campagito to East Delagoa. And this shows the current land use, how it's broken out, as I was saying, you have two residential uses here at East Delagoa, and the remaining portions are off of Campagito. So, proposed general plan designation would look like this, cover those blocks, and it would mirror the general commerce on the east side of Milpus. So, recommendations, to recommend approval of the general plan amendment to the city council, 25 parcels would be part of this general plan update. And really, what would happen is, there would not be any change in terms of the intensity, you could still build commercial on the current zoning and general plan. However, you could not do commercial condo or mixed-use commercial residential condo due to the track map findings, saying the zoning is consistent with general plan. So, there's no change. Some available for questions?
Thank you. Questions for staff? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Peter, would you explain, I thought back in June that we voted to initiate a general plan amendment, and now we're saying that we're, again, voting to initiate a general plan amendment to council. What's the difference between our June action and what we're doing today?
Today, Chair Myers, Commissioner Thompson, today, what we're doing is doing a recommendation to council. Sometimes, ideally, sometimes you do it in one shot, where you do initiation recommendation, but just given a short timeline, we had to get to your commission, we went for initiation and broke out the recommendation to today, so.
Thank you. So, this is really a, kind of the second reading of the decision that we made in June of this year, and nothing has changed.
That's correct. And then we're just looking at staff report, and we realized we left the word initiation in under our recommendation, and what we're saying is, this recommendation does not, we meant to take that paragraph out. But you're correct, we're doing a recommendation, it's a second reading.
Okay, at the appropriate time, I'm ready to make a motion.
Any further questions? Mr. Justice, would you like to make the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the planning commission recommends the initiation of this general plan amendment on the three blocks, westerly side of the three blocks of Milpus, as outlined in the staff report.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 6-0. This is appealable to city council within 10 days. Thank you. Okay, our next item. I'm stalling here for a minute to allow the applicant to come in the room. Okay, our next item is item 4B, application of Trish Allen, agent for Johnman Holding LLC, 15 South Hope Avenue. We've had a couple of requests here for a little bit longer presentation time by the applicant and by a member of the public, so we're gonna grant those. Our staff, presentation again will be given by Mr. Lawson.
Thank you, Chair Myers. The proposed project before you is for a tentative subdivision map and two modifications located at 15 South Hope. Project site can be found at the corner, just south of State, at the corner of Hope and State, and immediately east of the Kumbh Plaza. Question came up at the site visit about the area development, and in this slide, what we're showing is, currently on the books is the State Street lofts. On the north side of State Street, we had a pre-application over select staffing for mixed-use development. The development was kind of ambitious, and we're not sure if it will come back in the form that we saw it. And that just occurred probably in the past three or four weeks. Moving further to the east, we have Whole Foods, which backs up to the project site at 15 South Hope. And then, again, back on the north side of State, we have the Sandman Project. So, looking a little closer at the project site, this is 15 South Hope, and then the four parcels I've outlined here include the Whole Foods site, which is currently developed at the Circuit City. San Roque Creek is a little bit further to the east, and Royal Borough abuts the project site and then ends at San Roque Creek. YMCA is a little bit further south. The current development is a single-story commercial building, currently used as a retail rug store. Access right now is from both Hope Avenue as well as State. Showing a slide right here, this is probably the parcel that accesses off of State Street, and then this is a driver coming into Hope Avenue. Royal Borough Creek is below grade through the Taco Bell parking lot, located right here, daylights into the creek. Currently, the parking lot is paved up to the edge of the creek. Applications before you are for a modification for two bonus density units, a modification for front yard setback, reduce the setback by four feet, and a tentative subdivision map that would create 16 residential condos and one commercial condominium. And as proposed, demolish existing 8,329 square foot structure, construct 21,787 square foot building, of which 20,637 square foot will be residential, 16 condominiums, two bonus density, and one additional unit. Based on the configuration of the condos and the bedroom count, the allowed density for the site is 14 units. The one additional upper-middle income unit would be incorporated within the base density of the development. The project would be at three stories, 40 feet in height, and there would be 40 parking spaces, five of which would be on-grade, and the rest would be in a below-grade garage. Additional project components would include a restoration enhancement of the Royal Borough Creek area. The paving right now, serving as a parking lot, would be pulled back, and there would be approximately 35 feet setback on top of bank, that would be open area for both, open space as well as a restoration enhancement area. Public and private pedestrian improvements would include four feet of additional right-ofway being provided for sidewalk improvement along Hope Avenue, and that would give the required four foot of parkway and six feet of sidewalk. Additionally, there would be pedestrian access, the adjacent parcel, that was something the commission has spoken about, about having pedestrian access over to the Whole Foods project. Now, this would be for the residents of the condominium, it would be public access. Additionally, the driveway coming from State Street currently would become a fire lane and would be also serving as pedestrian access for the folks that live on the site. So, modifications I refer to would include two parking spaces, one here. This parking space is about 12 feet wide, and the purpose of that is to provide a little better maneuvering room in and out of that space. Space right here is the ADA required space, a fountain, and a portion of the first and second floor, about four feet of that would be included in the modification. Over here in the light yellow shows the buffer area, dash line shows the top of bank for the creek. This 20-foot setback is measured from the new right-ofway that's been provided. And then we're shown here in the dots are the, is the existing development, the Fidelity Building next door, and where that lies right now. At the site visit, there was a lot of discussion about the Hope Avenue driveway becoming a fire lane, not being used for access, and part of the reason that staff, city staff, had asked for that to be cut off and not used for anything except for emergency use is, as you can see in this photo here, within 50 feet, we have three different driveways. We have one serving Taco Bell, one serving 15 South Hope, one serving Fidelity Building. Additionally, we have a bike lane, and then down here in the lower right corner is a city bus stop. So, from pedestrian and traffic standpoint, works out a little better to have more emergency access, pedestrian access than additional driveway. And that's another view, looking the opposite way, here in the left corner is the arrow going into Taco Bell, and just short distance before you get to the 15 South Hope driveway. Terms of policy consistency, a couple of things I'll highlight that are from the staff report, consistency with the pedestrian master plan for providing the sidewalk and parkway. In the Upper State Street study, there were some discussions about how the setback should be measured from the new right-ofway, so there was a discussion about visual amenities, such as setting the building back a little bit further from the road. As Mr. Jones was shown in his slide, the first and second floors are about 16 feet from the new right-ofway, but then the third floor is set further back. Additionally, there'll be some landscaping for the parking areas at grade two, as well as, in front of the commercial building, there'll be a plaza, so you'll have a little bit more of an open feel, coming from the public sidewalk onto the private property. We received one letter from the Citizens Planning Association, and a couple of issues that brought up is they were concerned about the modification, and they were not supportive of that. Their concern was the noise compliance. There was a noise site prepared, and the residential units facing Hope Avenue, they include conditions that they have ventilation, windows closed, to bring the noise level down to the required 45 dB for interior. And a concern is about additional energy costs for that condition. They also asked about providing public access along the north property line, asked about the buffer not to be used as common open space in terms of meeting the requirement, and they had concerns about the S2 calculation. Terms of the modification, staff was supportive of that, due to the fact that there are a number of, a couple amenities being provided. One is the fact that there is a stairway being provided, has access to Whole Foods, the fire lane, and now it takes away additional driveway onto State Street. They are providing a little bit more open area right in this area here, with the building setback, providing additional right-ofway consistent with pedestrian master plans. There's a number of things they're providing, as well as, of course, the buffer area, that is not a requirement because of Royal Borough Creek, is something that applicant volunteers give 35 feet of that setback. In terms of the mechanical, windows closed condition, that's a standard condition for any project subject to noise beyond 60 dB. And speaking to the building inspectors, usually, any condo developed, whether they're close to freeway or away from an area that's less than 60 dB, they will have a central heat unit, and within that, they will have a fresh air intake. The energy cost of that is very- The energy cost of that is very low, especially in the summertime, they won't be running gas, so you have it heated, and they can circulate the air within the unit at a very minimal impact. Additionally, they have the option of simply opening the windows and not running the unit. As far as the 15% common area for calculation, there is no prohibition about having your common open space within the buffer. Even if we were adjacent to Old Mission Creek or Mission Creek, where there is a requirement for a setback, the only prohibition is on development. And development is defined as just the buildings, or grading, or rock removal, things like that, but there's no prohibition on having your common open space in that area. So lastly, about the SD2 compliance, Mr. Jones has a slide showing how the development will fit into two-story. So basically, for SD2 compliance, you have to show that your three stories of development can fit into a two-story building and meet all the applicable regulations of the ordinance. So what we have is the 20-foot setback, common open space, and they've met all that. They've shown the on-grade parking meeting the 20-foot setback, and then the below-grade parking is not subject to setback because it's fully below grade, it is a basement. So our analysis is that they are consistent with the SD2 compliance, and there is, again, no regulation that needs to provide that 35-foot setback from the top of bank, so they can certainly use that area in the calculation. So with that, I'm going to conclude, and my recommendation is to make the findings, approve the modifications, approve the tentative subdivision map, subject to conditions of approval. And CPA did bring up a question about traffic and the traffic study and adequacy of that. So today, we do have Mr. Steve Foley here and Stacy Wilson, and I think, and Scott Schell is on his way. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for staff at this time? Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, since one of the topics under discussion today will most likely be the noise compliance, there was no indication, at least in the packet that we received, of having a noise report or the noise contour lines as they fall across the site. How are we to judge that, or do you have that information available for us?
Chair Myers, Commissioner Bartlett, I do have a noise study with me, and I believe that you include the contours, so I can provide it for you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, the right-of-way expansion, that was a requirement by the city? Was that a requirement by the city?
Chairman Myers, Commissioner White, that's correct.
And how was that different from the Fidelity Building? How did the Fidelity Building, the Fidelity Building get a mod? Do we know? I voted for it, so.
I understand.
How could I have done that?
Why did she do that? Shortnesses, I don't know why I did that. I believe that was before the pedestrian master plan was being implemented.
So it's the pedestrian master plan that triggered the expansion of the right-of-way for pedestrian purposes there?
Correct.
Another question, on the front yard setback and the mod there, the, does the area of the front yard that is open, and maybe the applicant could address this as, if not staff, what is the area of the front yard of the project? Does that, is that equivalent, where I'm headed with this is, we talked about this in the Upper State Street study, of looking at the idea of using the area of front yard setback as a way of providing more flexibility, but providing the open space as well. So that's one way that I could be looking at this front yard mod. So I appreciate hearing about that sometime during the hearing. And then last is, did the Creeks Committee look at the rehab of the creek? Is that a customary process? Do rehabs go to the Creeks Committee?
That's correct. They took a look at it, and they'll be looking at it again as part of the building permit review. But yes, it is customary, they would look at that.
Thank you. Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A simple question, I don't recall whether or not the Taco Bell is slated to remain as that parcel develops. It is or is not? It is not. But its driveway is to remain, the ghost of Taco Bell? I mean, oh, it's a different parcel? It's not part of, but it's not staying? Somewhere along the line, I heard that Taco Bell was going away. Maybe I'm wrong.
It is going away. Yes.
Okay, but its driveway will remain to haunt us. Is that it?
No. As currently proposed.
That's what I thought. But the driveway stays.
It would go.
Well, I mean, there's a building there, I realize that. There will be a different driveway, but I'm thinking of the whole expanse, one driveway down State Street. Okay, that's the answer. Thank you, Commissioner.
Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Chair Myers. Mr. White asks a good question about the setbacks and the history of this particular block, and I don't know if we have anyone that we can call to get a confirmation of it, but I think they did get a mod for being so close to the sidewalk, and that that was one of the original triggers for beginning to distinguish Upper State Street from downtown in that the staff's support for the Fidelity Building and for the modification into the SD2 zone setback was part of planning uptown as if it were downtown, and planning it as though it had a grid system, and as though pedestrian circulation would be improved by having buildings closer to the sidewalk. And then once the building got built, I think there was a general agreement that that was a wrong decision. Well, maybe not wrong, but that that decision should not be made again. And so it's a very good question, and that's my memory of it, if anyone has another historic perspective on it. So now, we have more respect for that SD2 zone setback, and that's part of what we're seeing in this project. I do have a question for traffic, in particular on the Hope side, when people are ingress and egress out of the building. One correspondence we received questions whether there's going to be a problem with people turning across traffic and so on. And did traffic, did our traffic department look at this, and does it need a median or some change to the traffic signaling, or is it fine the way it is?
Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Chair Myers and Commissioners. We did take a look at that in transportation with our operations supervisor as well at the time. First of all, a left turn in and out of the driveway on Hope Avenue is legal. There was not determined based on the very little amount of traffic anticipated as part of this project, there was not a need for a median or a turn lane, left turn in or the protection, and sometimes they provide a protection for left turns out. So that's why the design is as it is, to really essentially not change in the center there on Hope Avenue.
Okay, thanks for confirming that. That's been my personal experience when I go to Kinko's, which is just next door, that there's never really a problem turning in or out from there, but I wanted to take a chance to ask traffic about that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Mr. Lawson, in the plans we got, I didn't see anything about drainage. Could you cover the plans and the issues over drainage on the site, or perhaps is the applicant going to cover that? Okay, I see a head nod, so I'll defer until the applicant covers it. Thank you.
Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two questions that relate to the modification request. One is, is the expansion of the right-of-way by four feet a surface right-of-way only for pedestrians, since the parking garage still continues to go to the property, the old property line?
Chair Myers, Commissioner Bartlett, that's correct. We actually spent a lot of time on that question. And really, was driving the additional right-of-way is simply for the sidewalk. Thus, our city easement will be based on development of that sidewalk, and that's why we went to surface and down 12-inch, and that's what the easement will encompass.
Okay, and then the other item then related to the front modification request, when you were talking about the buffer in the back, you said that that was something that the applicant had volunteered in terms of doing the 35-foot buffer, and that that wasn't an absolute requirement?
That's correct.
Thank you.
What is the requirement, 25 feet?
For the Royal Borough Creek, there is no requirement. The only thing that's part of ordinance is Mission Creek, and all of Mission Creek having 25-foot setback.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a question for either Ms. Wilson, Mr. Foley, or indirectly, Mr. Cunningham. And it has to do with the fire lane connection. And I understand the applicant wanted to use this as access to State Street, and Transportation said, no, it's not appropriate, and you provided the basis for that, and I understand and agree with that. My question has to do with why it needs to be paved, and whether there are ways to use pervious surfacing that can support a fire truck. It seems like this is getting backed into being paved, when there may in fact be ways of making that pervious and still support the weight of a fire engine. And how do other municipalities deal with this very issue? This looks like an ideal place to kind of have a little bit of a bioswale, some green space that doesn't need to be reserved for pavement for 99% of the time.
Chair Myers and Commissioners. Commissioner Joseph, thank you for raising the issue, and I know that the city has a great interest in including pervious paving where that is possible. To date, and for, related to this project, the paving that you're asking about in particular relates to the fire department and their necessary access. And as for pervious paving, I am not, well, I don't work for the fire department, but I'm not aware of a paving material that they have approved that would be, oh, like in the configuration of typical pervious paving that we've seen, like the inner locking pavers and other pavers that have gaps. I haven't seen those being approved for the fire department for their necessary access. So that's all I can really speak to at this point, but that's my understanding of the paving of that area unless there's, unless you have, okay, thank you.
I guess that's what I want to ask Mr. Cunningham, his experience over the Southwest, is whether he's run into situations where that, both needs can be met, the need to support a fire truck and the opportunity to provide pervious surfacing.
Cunningham, do you have anything you might want to offer? Okay, okay, fine. Okay, seeing no further questions, we'll have the applicant's presentation.
Good afternoon, Trish Allen with Suzanne Elitch Planning and Permitting Services. I'm going to start out with just some introductions and give you a brief outline of what we're going to talk about this afternoon. I will try to stick to 15 minutes, but just in the event we needed a couple extra minutes, that's why I made that request, because of some of the questions that have come up once that public notice went out. So with me today is Dave Jones, the project architect behind me with Lundbeck and Minor Architects. He'll review the site planning and the architectural design. And as you know, Bob Cunningham behind me on the other side, landscape architect with Arcadia Studios. Of course, he'll go over the landscape plan and some of the issues around the creek plantings. Scott Schell has arrived, transportation planner with ATE, and he's going to talk about some of the traffic counts, the peak hour trips, and some more information on the ingress and egress to support staff's review of this. And I'm going to have a brief conclusion on just some zoning ordinance and policy consistency items. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dave. You going to sit down?
It is. Good afternoon, planning commissioners. Dave Jones, Lundbeck and Minor Architects. If I don't answer the questions that have been asked, remind me, but Commissioner Thompson, you asked about the drainage. When I get to the basement plan, remind me of that. And you asked about the square footage of the front, and I think I've got the answer to that. And Mr. Justice, I've already got an answer in my slideshow. So I've got 32 images, and I'm going to try to make this a motion picture show. Our, I'll just give you a little neighborhood show first, aerial view of the property, and you see the 20-foot piece of property that goes out to State Street. On the right-hand side is Kinko's, and the left-hand side of our property is the adjacent mixed-use property, and Macy's parking lot on the other side of the street. These are the buildings from street view, what we call the Kinko's Building, closer to our property, and our property is immediately to the left of this visual. This is the existing building, which will be coming down, and you see behind it the existing three-story condominium mixed-use project. This is a closer view of it. That's the driveway into the parking garage. As you can see, the ground floor on our common property line is a blank wall all the way back, it's their garages, and they have a second-floor living area patio. There are six units all the way back, and then their bedrooms are up on the top. This is up at the corner of State and Hope, the bank across the street, and the other across the street, diagonally across the street, then down, excuse me, looking across the street from our property at the driveway into Macy's, the lower curb cut, and that's immediately across from our driveway, and then the Macy's building, and then looking farther down the street. This is our site plan with State Street up where it says site plan, and Hope Avenue to the left. Pardon? I can use the pointer. Like that. Our neighbor, immediately to the north, this is the Taco Bell Building. To answer another question, this outline that you see right here is the outline of the building on the proposed Whole Foods project, and this other outline is another building. So my assumption is that there is a curb cut going just about where the existing curb cut is. And this is our property down here, and this is our proposed development, a Royal Borough Creek in the back, and the setbacks that we've described. We're proposing a pedestrian pathway in addition or alongside of the fire access lane. This is just a very simple diagram of the constraints that we have. Peter was, went into some length about the pedestrian master plan. There currently is no four-foot wide parkway planter along the street, and so that additional space will be provided, plus a six-foot sidewalk. Right now, there's only a six-foot sidewalk. So the measurement for the SD2 setback of 20 feet is in addition to the four feet. When we designed the project, we used just the 20 feet. We think that we're consistent with the spirit of SD2 being back from the street 20 feet. Then in the back, Royal Borough Creek, the existing oak tree, it's a 30-inch oak tree, is very close to the top of the existing bank. This change of color from blue to light green is the calculated top of bank, and then we have set our project back 35 feet from that. The creek bed is wholly on our property. The property line goes a little bit beyond the bottom, the bank. The property line goes a little bit beyond the bottom, the bank itself. And then the fire lane. And there is also an Edison easement that kind of diagonally comes down here. There was a transformer that you probably saw. That transformer serves this property, this property, and also somehow there's a pipe that goes down and serves the Kinko's. This is the parking garage down below grade. We have 35 parking spaces. 31 of them are the resident parking that fully fulfills the requirement of the, for the residential units. We have four guest parking spaces. They are, three of them there, and then there's an accessible one there. There's an exit stair there, an exit stair there, an elevator. And to answer Commissioner Thompson's question, there is a filtration pit down here that all of the water that comes from the paved areas above, down the slope of the ramp, and anything that washes off the cars, goes through a filtration basin that's gravel three feet deep and 30 by 20 or something, and then gets filtered and then pumped back up into a 2,500-gallon tank and gets dumped into the creek. So it is all filtered. And then there are paved areas in, a little bit in the front, that drain out toward Hope Avenue. Also, I want to point out some areas that are kind of carved out of this parking garage. One there, one there, one there, one there, one there. These are all planters above, so we have the ability to plant real trees of some significance in the space above. We only have two small planters in the body of the project that don't go all the way to the ground. I can point those out. This is the site plan and floor plan of the project. Mr. White asked about what the square footage is of this SD2 setback. The property is 130 feet wide. If you measure 20 feet back, it's 130 by 20. If you measure 16 foot back, the way we have to measure it, it's 2,080 square feet or something. That's the one I calculated or Trish did for me. So that's the answer to your question in that regard. What we did on this project was realize that we wanted to respect, to the extent that we could, the outdoor second-floor patios on these condominiums. They're just in a line back here. So we kept our building open here so that they still get a whole lot of daylight. We have the commercial space here. We're back from the street, a plaza, a fountain. We have, all of the commercial spaces are at grade. There are three uncovered and two covered. This is the accessible parking space. We have a covered trash area. And then we have a kind of a grand entrance into the residential portion of the property, a stairway, an open courtyard that has a big planter and paved area. And this pathway through goes out the back and allows the residents to enjoy the creek and get to the adjacent parcels. The commercial space is about 1,200 square feet. There are five living units on this floor level. This living unit here is the affordable one. This is three-bedroom. The others on this floor are all two-bedroom. The second floor, we have two one-bedroom units that are over the commercial space. We have five additional living units. This is the affordable one, and this is the affordable one. So you have a total of three. This is three-bedroom. It's stacked on top of the one below, and all the others are two-bedrooms here. All the living units are between 1,100 and 1,500 square feet, so they're very modest in size. All of the common pathway through here looks down into the open courtyard. And then the third floor, so you can see the third floor is setback from the street about 50 feet. We also set back this portion of the building about 50 feet from our neighbors. This is a two-story element, and the second floor of our neighbors is just about the same level as the roof of this. These are all two-bedroom units on the back. Nine of our 16 units face the creek and get the benefit of the creek. These are the elevations for the project. The entrance into the residential portion, this is the store. These are the one-bedroom units, and they have patios on either side. This portion is 70 feet back from the street. And as you can see, or envision perhaps, the ramp into the lower parking garage starts before the building does so that I can lower the archway over the ramp so that it doesn't have as much imposition on the architecture. And then there are three parking spaces here. This is the stair tower. This raised portion here is way at the back. This is 27-foot parapet right here. The floor-to-floor height varies. Over the commercial space, the floor-to-floor height is 13 foot six only. On the rest of it, the floor-to-floor height is 11 feet from the first to the second floor, second to the third floor, and then the third floor to the roof is 10 foot six. This is the side facing Kinko's. As you can see, we're stepping back. The third floor begins back here, and that's 50 feet back from the property line. This is the back corner. Right here, the building starts angling away. This is really the back elevation, but this is where it turns the corner right here. This is the, there's a little patio, second-floor patio there and there. This is the stairway coming up from the garage below. Portion of the building facing the creek, the east elevation. Again, the angled portion is kind of this white area. This is flat facing the street. These are the nine living units here, three across on each floor. This is the pedestrian entrance into the back hallway, and this is the stairwell. And the final north elevation facing our neighbor, again, that's 50 feet away from the property line. This portion is relatively close. It's five and a half feet. This is 11 feet. And then it steps back. That's like 25 feet from the property line. All of these windows here are all bedrooms or bathrooms. There is a three-foot-high retaining wall across here, and I've got a visual that shows that, but I didn't think you'd be interested in it. This is the accessible parking space and the other parking space below, and it's kind of around the corner. One of the things the ABR asked us to do was kind of rework this area, and this represents reworking it. We have a more massive corner that we didn't have before these things were pushed up forward. So we've responded to the ABR comments in all respects except two that I didn't want to do, and I'm going to talk to them when I go back. One of the things was, one of the members of the ABR asked that this front plaza be a more circuitous path for the pedestrian experience, and I didn't want to do that. I think this is a more formal building, and I want this to be a more formal presentation. This is the roof plan. This is the three-story area here. As you can see, we've got photovoltaic panels. Right now, I've got about 100 square feet for each unit. And while I'm here, I mentioned that we will be getting the two-star Santa Barbara Green Built rating, 100 points. We can get that. In addition, we'll be doing some other green building techniques. This is a two-story roof here. You can see the ramp going down. This is our three uncovered parking spaces. Also, we're enhancing the paving in the parking lot. I jumped the gun there. This is the existing building, and this is our project superimposed on the, for a photo simulation. The entrance into the store, the entrance beyond this tree, the street tree, to the residential units, our parking lot back here. Another view of the existing building, I did it again. The existing building and then our building in its place, entrance into the residence, the parking and going down the hill. You can see how we stepped back. It's essentially a two-story presentation to the street with one-story wings on either side. And then third story, you'd probably be able to see over on the other side of Macy's. This is an aerial kind of view of the same thing that really gives us a little bit more description. And I think that's a good one. This is an aerial view from the back. Oops. Gosh darn it. Oh, I'm really blowing my thing here. There. This is the side facing our neighbor, and all of these face the creek. In regard to our respect for the neighbors, here is a simulation or a drawing that shows, I think, some instructive stuff. This gray outline is the outline of the second-floor patios on the rear of our neighbors. As I said, there are six units going across here. These middle two units, the screen wall at the back of the patio is represented here. That wall is six foot four inches high, so they're not looking out over our property anyway, even though that's 50 feet away. And back here, where we're 11 feet away, this patio has, still has access to the creek, and that's represented up here. We're 15 feet away. We have a little deck on, right on that corner off the master bedroom, and they have a patio. So that's the, how we have respected their open space. Here's a thing that developed over the last two days as a result of your questions regarding the fire access lane. This is a very quick sketch of the, kind of the existing condition. This is State Street up here. Here's the bulk of our property. This is that little transformer. This is our neighbor's building. This is the way the driveway goes right now, and it's paved. That's a blank wall. What we think we can do after talking with Nikki Stutz at Fire Department is that the Fire Department need only come about 75% of the way back here. And so what I'm proposing is, we can put a retaining wall across here, represented there, fill all of this area back with export from our basement, take the paving out, put permeable pavers in here, in here. And yes, the Fire Department does accept permeable pavers, and Bob Cunningham's office has used it a couple of ones on other projects. And Nikki confirmed that, yes, we can do that. So we can have permeable pavers up there. We can move our connection to the neighboring property, which we're proposing here, around the corner and get it here so we get our construction of that stairway out of the setback. And then the rest of this can be plants. So I think that this is something that we'll show the ABR in a few, buy into this. I think it's a win-win situation for everything except one, and that is, we worked with Whole Foods, and this was a really good place for us to land with our stairway. This lands us behind the building, and if they allow us, maybe we can walk around. Other than that, it's all an improvement to what we had shown before. With that, I will turn it over to Bob Cunningham on the landscape.
You want this?
Sure.
Okay, that goes forward. Zero minutes gone. How did you do that? Okay, the blue button is the player. All right. Well, good afternoon, Chair Myers and members of the Commission. My name's Bob Cunningham with Arcadia Studio Landscape Architects. I'll rush you through this quickly. The planting along Hope Avenue is jacarandas, the approved street tree. Back off of the, or within the setback, we've got two taller trees. These are Mindanao gums, eucalyptus. We have several of these on State Street. Skyline trees essentially, so they will be overarching the jacarandas along the front. A smaller canopy tree as an accent at the entrance, that would either be a New Zealand Christmas tree or a gold medallion tree. The remaining trees within these tight spaces will be primarily palms and giant birds of paradise. We don't have a lot of room to squeeze plants in, so we're using narrow upright materials. Along the south side, we've already got the advantage of three mature London plane trees, so we're not proposing any additional tall landscaping along that side, thanks to Kinko's. Along the north side, we're installing king palms in the narrow space between our project and the one to the north. There are also some narrow trees, broadleaf evergreen trees on the adjacent property, paper bark trees, which will fill that space. And if, when we look at this a little more closely, we determine that these king palms may get into the views of the upstairs patios in the adjacent property, we'll shift those to respect those views. Along the backside of the property, we've got this one very big oak tree that is being preserved. And if you've looked carefully at the landscape portion of the packet, you'll notice that on the tree preservation plan, there is another oak right about in there. We're also proposing to save that. It does not show up on this plan. Which?
The diolons.
The diolons.
This here.
Sorry, I have not.
Down.
No, I've really screwed it up. Here we go. Okay. Here's our tree preservation plan or tree removal plan. The large oak in the bottom, that's tree one. And then tree seven is the other oak that I just spoke about. Tree eight is another California native. It's a California walnut, large eucalyptus citriadora above the creek bank that we're preserving. The rest of the trees, as you see, will be removed. These other trees, this one is on the Whole Foods property. These down the creek will be preserved. We don't have any reason to want to remove those. Along the back, you can see little decomposed granite pathways and patios. We'll relocate this particular one because it runs in conflict with the tree, the oak tree drip line issues. We can move it up into this area and escape the drip line of the oak tree. You can also see here the staircase that Dave mentioned. We will be moving over to this area if we're able to do that improvement on the fire lane. Okay. And this is our creek planting plan. This essentially is all California natives, all suitable to use on the South Coast. We've made use of the plant palette that the Whole Foods project prepared for their creek restoration plans. However, we're not planning on altering any of the landscape on the bank itself. The fact that we've shown some of these plants kind of spilling down over, onto the bank is, let's just say, draft or license, we'll shift them all back to above, onto the flat area above the creek bank. But essentially, we've got yarrow ground cover, California meadow sedge as a grass that won't need to be mowed and can be, can do just fine without water. A couple of western redbud trees and, again, a completely native riparian-oriented plant palette that should survive just fine without irrigation after establishment. Is this the appropriate time? Okay. I have a couple of requests for reconsideration of conditions of approval. Condition A to B, in quotes, one. And B5A, no irrigation system shall be installed under the drip line of any oak tree. As you can see, we've got a huge drip line on this large oak tree, and we've also got this other oak tree that we don't show on this plan. If we're able to plant in here at all, we've got to irrigate that to get the plants established. It would be a drip irrigation system, and we would be happy to hold planting and irrigation a certain distance away from the trunk of the tree, which is where the sensitive area is with regard to watering and oak root fungus. But I personally, my professional experience is, you don't need to completely keep irrigation out from under a canopy of an oak tree. Again, we would water to get the plants established on a very limited basis because they're going to be natives. But we'd like to be able to leave the irrigation system intact for at least a three-year period. intact for at least a three-year period to assure plant establishment. After that time, I think it would be wise to leave the irrigation system in with a shut-off, so that we don't always water under that tree drip line. If we get into a drought situation, even oak trees like to have a little bit of supplemental water. And I think that this blanket prohibition against irrigating under an oak tree is just a little, it's draconian, and it's not necessary. We'd also be happy to involve an arborist in the project to write specific guidelines regarding the amount of irrigation that happens for the project, and so on. So, that's one. The other is the B fifteen, small b, in quotes, five, parentheses, five. I'm very curious to know where this condition came from. Oak seedlings and saplings less than four inches at four feet above ground that are removed during construction shall be transplanted where feasible. If transplanting is not feasible-
Can I interrupt you for one sec?
I'm sorry?
Where are you?
Oh, page, okay, let me get to that.
Now, we've received new conditions of approval.
Okay. This, I don't have a page number on here. Oh, yeah, page fourteen of seventeen?
Okay.
Item fifteen, tree protection. I'm sorry. And it's at the, near the bottom of that list. Small letter b, item five, in parentheses. Okay, I'll pick up where I left off. If transplantation is not feasible, replacement trees should be planted at a minimum of one-to-one ratio. Replacement trees should be a minimum of one gallon size. Derived from South Coastal Santa Barbara County stock. This is an urban project. We don't have room on the site if we use the landscape plan that we proposed to transplant oak saplings from elsewhere on the site and insert them into our landscape. If we, you know, if transplantation is not possible, again, we still have not accommodated one-gallon oak trees anywhere on the site, and I don't understand why that is necessary. I think if, if we asked the, or if we directed the general contractor that during demolition, oak tree saplings could be salvaged by perhaps a botanic garden, or a contractor willing to dig them up and take them and use them for reforestation elsewhere in the city or the county, where they could truly be used for habitat restoration, I think we'd be happy to do that. But to simply say that any oak tree seedlings that we find on this site, we've got to use on this site, I think is, it just doesn't make sense. So, I'd like relief from that, or else the ability to take those seedlings and put them elsewhere where they could be put to good use. And that concludes my presentation. I'll turn it over to Scott Shell.
Thank you.
I'm Scott Shell with Associated Transportation Engineers. We're on to the riveting portion of the presentation traffic. And I'm going to have my assistant man the controls, since everybody was fumbling with them. I'm here today to answer the three traffic questions that were raised in the letter that was submitted by the Citizens Planning Association. So, the first issue that was raised in the letter had to do with the traffic analysis that we completed that looked at traffic for the existing building. And as we started on the project, we talked to city staff, and they said, "Be conservative." This is Upper State Street, so we want to be conservative in the analysis. In doing so, we used furniture store rates for the existing building. Probably you guys remember when it was built, it was a bank. Bank moved. Was a furniture store for a while, now it's a rep store. So, for the furniture store rates and looking at ITE, they're the lowest rates that we can have. So, see down here. It equates to one AM trip and four PM trips, so very small credits for the existing building. Let me flip to the next table. This is just a summary of the traffic data that was in the report, and again, just noting the very small credits for the existing building. If we were to assume general retail or a bank down here, we'd have much higher credits. So, again, a conservative analysis that was done.
Next one?
So, the second comment in the CPA letter questions the use of the Upper State Street traffic study data. We use the existing and cumulative traffic forecast in that document to evaluate the intersections adjacent to the site. And as all, you all know, that was a comprehensive traffic study done for the whole corridor, and it was reviewed extensively by the public, a lot of comments, and it was approved by the city. So, it was the correct tool for us to use. As a matter of fact, one of the reasons it was done is to provide a standard basis for traffic analysis in this area for projects that are in the pipeline. They could, oh, not quite yet. There was one kind of ironic point that they said we should have counts maybe later in November. The Upper State Street study actually did recount this one intersection at State and Hope in response to some of the comments that were Another issue that came up was, should we study Fridays or Fridays at Christmas? And really, the city's policy and standard engineering practice to look at Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, kind of throw up Mondays is low and Fridays is high. Also, the Christmas issue, we really don't go out and say, "We're going to study traffic right on Christmas Day and design our system for that." Or you've heard that adage, "You don't build a parking lot for Christmas shopping." So, the last issue raised in the CPA letter, and we heard questions about today, was ingress and egress to the site. And a couple of things I want to point out. First of all, the existing driveway is down here. It's actually offset from the driveway up at La Cumbre Plaza, so it doesn't really line up with the existing break that we have in the left turn lane on Hope Avenue. So, when the project is rebuilt, the driveway is going to be relocated here to line up correctly with the La Cumbre Plaza driveway, where they allow the left turns in and out of the site to be made in a much better fashion. And the last thing on this slide is just the numbers. These are the anticipated peak hour volumes at the driveway, very low. We see three left turns in, three left turns out, fairly low volumes that we heard Stacy talk about. I think that concludes my presentation. I'm here for questions. I'm going to turn it back to Trish.
Okay, thank you. I'm hoping your conclusion is a quick one.
Always has to be, since I go at last, isn't that the truth? Actually, staff did a really excellent overview, so I can summarize my points very quickly. I wanted to start out and talk about the SD two. We're all getting very familiar with the intent of the SD two to impose traffic-related restrictions. Those are implemented through a few different development standards. One, provide your parking on-site. Two, prohibition of drive-through facilities. Three, building height. A three-story building, not to exceed 45 feet. In order to propose a building of three stories, we have to demonstrate, which is the slide up on the screen, that that same proposed floor area can be built in a two-story structure while meeting your development standards, setbacks, parking, et cetera. And then additionally, for this, a building of three stories, or actually, a building that exceeds 15 feet in height in the SD two zone, you do have a front yard setback of 20 feet. So, the slide that I'm showing here shows that we, our proposed floor area, this is the ground floor down here, and a second floor here, so the commercial space and the 16 residential units can be constructed in a two-story building. This is just a graphic representation. And it actually does adhere to the 35-foot setback that we're proposing. And it adheres to the 20-foot setback with the four-foot pedestrian easement out front. And again, this is not intended to show a project alternative. So, I just, Peter did cover this really well. I don't need to spend any more time on compliance with this standard. This slide just demonstrates the additional open space that this project affords. As you know from visiting the site, it's covered with a building and pavement. There's some raised planners, but it's basically all improved. So, in this area back here, I have just an illustration of the amount of paving that's going to be removed to create the 35-foot setback. This increases the open space almost 20% from the existing condition. We take that away, and, oh, I did the same thing as everybody else. This is all our open space in the back of the property. As staff mentioned, there is no code requirement to provide a specific creek setback from the top of this creek bank, Royal Borough versus Mission Creek. And what's done more as a standard is that you have some biological assessment that makes some recommendations on how to treat the creek area. In this case, we had Watershed Environmental do a buffer analysis. And within that analysis, they recommended a minimum of a 25-foot setback from the top of the creek, with the exception of the area where the oak tree is located. And within that area, he recommended a 35-foot. As you know, we've decided to programmatically provide a 35-foot setback, improving on his recommendation. He also was very consistent with the Cuesta report that was prepared for the Whole Foods project, in that the banks are so vertical, no one's recommending that anyone go down and remove any vegetation in the bank area. That would most likely result in added erosion and sedimentation. Again, staff did touch on our ability to provide our common open space in this buffer area. We're doing the 15% of the lot area to meet our common open space requirement. And one of the concerns raised by Citizens Planning Association is, you know, whether or not that would result in an environmental impact. And I have my opinions about that and experience with other projects. I feel that if we're, we have a presence here now in the back of this property, an ability to interact with the creek and enjoy the natural beauty, and in terms of, you know, the restoration that's going to occur, and hopefully, an improvement to the habitat by removing non-natives and that kind of thing, I think that actually, the common open space and the way that Dave has designed the project to really enjoy this creek is going to result in an environmental One of the questions at the site visit was, have you been tracking the Upper State Street study? And absolutely, for the course of at least two and a half years of processing this project through the development review process, we've been paying attention to the Upper State Street study, and the project has evolved as a result. I just have some bullet points on the different measures that we have incorporated into the project, improved and enhanced the pedestrian wideway. We've improved the mid-block State Street traffic as Peter's graphic showed with eliminating that driveway as access from State Street. The provision of underground parking in our project, again, substantial creek buffer and enhancements. We have a connection, either to a pedestrian connection, either to State Street or the adjoining property. We'll see where the commission guides us in that regard. And of course, the addition of some city street trees. And not to belabor the modification requests, the existing condition is non-conforming to the SD two. That building is six feet back from the existing edge of the right-of-way. Our property line is out in the center line of Hope Avenue, so all of that is city right-of-way. Further, there are two parking spaces in that 20-foot setback, the non-conforming aspects, and raised planners. So, we are asking for some minor modifications as a result of implementing the wider sidewalk to be consistent with the pedestrian master plan. However, we're reducing, significantly reducing, the existing encroachment.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up, please.
I'm nearly there. And just a minor note, that all the encroachments, we explained those to the ABR at our last hearing, and they were all very supportive of those. Additional project benefits, we talked about the provision of affordable units. We have two density bonus units and an additional unit that we're offering at upper-middle income restriction. This is a mixed-use development, I think very consistent with the general plan policies for this area of the city. Significant drainage improvements over the existing condition. We'll be treating stormwater consistent with city policies through biofiltration in addition to the system that Dave explained, our setback, removal of non-native vegetation, and installation of native vegetation. And we're here for more of your questions. Thank you for the additional time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant, Ms. Larson?
Thanks. This would be for Mr. Cunningham. The removal of non-native vegetation, but is the eucalyptus non-native that's going to be in the buffer?
It is, it is non-native.
It is non-native, and that's?
It's a significant skyline tree. We felt it was-
Okay.
-appropriate to use it. I don't believe that particular eucalyptus is an invasive.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Another question for Mr. Cunningham. How is the maintenance access to the rear portion of the site? Are they going to be coming in through the fire lane and having to park on that side? Or, since the two side yards are totally built with patios and walls, or do they all go through the tunnel, the pedestrian passau, to get to the back with equipment?
That's a very good question, Mr. Bartlett.
The latter. The latter. They'll walk through the common open area, the common corridor area in the-
But they don't need lawn mowers, from what we understand.
Correct.
And then while you're at the podium, you mentioned the two-star Built Green program. Are you attempting to go for LEED certification on this at all?
No, we probably won't. LEED certification is good for bragging rights, but it doesn't mean you don't, aren't doing a green building. We, two little incidents or anecdotes. We recently did a project, bid it a year and a half ago, which the client said, "I want you to design this to LEED standards, but we're not sure we want to go through with a certification process." And so, in the bid documents, I asked the contractor to give me a credit for just the contractor not providing the documentation, the startup stuff, all that paperwork stuff. He gave me $50,000 back for not doing the paperwork. Doesn't mean the building isn't designed that way, but the paperwork isn't done. It's 50 grand. And we've just done a, what we think will be a platinum LEED certification, and it's a small TI, and we've probably spent very close to 50 grand on just the documentation stuff. So, we're going to design it for green stuff, but it's, we're probably not going to do the certification.
Right, because, you know, under LEED, you know, for native landscape, the idea is to put in temporary irrigation and remove it after your efforts established. Otherwise, you'd lose points if you are irrigating native landscape. It defeats the purpose, so, thank you.
Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Myers. I have a question about the maintenance of the buffer area. And is that anticipated to be maintained as part of the CCNRs, just like the rest of the landscaping of the building? And sort of related to that is the kinds of uses that might go on back there. This is a great school district. There's probably going to be people living in this building that have children, and they're going to look at that open space and think, "Ooh, that's a great place to put a picnic table or a climber." And I'm just wondering how that kind of future use might be integrated into or anticipated in this buffer.
Very good question. The plant materials that we've got as ground covers will sustain some traffic. The California meadow sedge in particular is a pretty tough grass. However, it's not, it does get about a 12-inch depth to it if it's not mown, so it wouldn't be, would necessarily be something that kids could ride their tricycles on. I suppose it would be up to the CCNRs to dictate just specifically what would and would not be allowed within that space. Our intention with regard to the design, as we've shown it, is that it would simply be a passive, passive space and not, not someplace where you'd be throwing a frisbee. But that's something that we haven't actually worked out in terms of specific, you know, restrictions or requirements.
Why I bring it up is because it's being used as the common open space calculation. So, this piece of land has dual uses. One of them, I'm perceiving as being a very beautiful restoration that's more to be looked at than to be played in or walked through. And the other is the idea of the common open space, which, when I hear that, and I'm in a good school district, I think kids' playing area. So, I'd like the applicant perhaps to address, or the commission to consider what the uses of that area are. For my purposes, putting some decomposed granite pads out there that could be used for play would be good from my perspective. This is a voluntary- This is a voluntary buffer.
Yes.
And so it could have some areas that are available for use by the families that will live here.
We'd be happy to consider that during design development and see if we can work it out so that it can be more actively used. We do have decomposed granite pads there for, that are essentially oriented to each unit plus the pathway. That, again, may change because we're, we hope to relocate that staircase, but I think we could certainly open up the space a little bit more to decomposed granite surface rather than the planted surface and make it more usable.
I'll probably be asking for some consideration of common space, since that's what it's being called out as in the application. And then my other question is about the public-private. The staircase, I mean, where would gates go? How would the staircase or the little pocket park that you're proposing on the fire lane? I mean, how, would this, any of this be anticipated to have used by the public, or is this all anticipated to be used by the families in the building and therefore have some kind of gates or other enclosures?
Commissioner Jacobs, it is envisioned that this is for the benefit of the residents. I hadn't envisioned that there would be gates that would prevent people from coming in, but it's not for public access.
When I look at your drawing for your potential use for the fire lane, I like that very much.
You do?
And thank you for asking the fire department and so on, getting the experts to tell you where that something could happen and what could happen there.
It's possible that this plant area could be a play area right there.
Right. So I was, exactly. I was thinking you may be gaining your common open space in a different spot.
Play handball on all three walls.
That ramp was destined to be used by kids on trikes anyway. Skateboards, yeah, as it was. So that may be something that we call out in our discussion as well. But I don't see any gates, and I don't want to see any gates unless there's a really good reason for them. Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not getting a clear picture yet, and maybe you could show that in plan, this fire lane and where the line is where you will be, where it will have to be fire lane and where it would start being landscaping.
Yeah, please. I'll back into the answer of this question. The fire department requirement is that they have no more than 150-foot hose length. If I measure from the bottom corner here, the 150 feet comes across and up here to just about here. So 150 feet from here up takes me just beyond the Edison easement, that diagonal line. It takes me up to right about there. So my thought was, that would be where we would put a retaining wall across, fill everything else, and have the stairway just come down straight here and then a lift right in there. So this is potentially all planted area. That's a retaining wall, and then this is permeable paving beyond.
Okay. All right. And then, Dave, one more question, and that is, this is a voluntary, I mean, this is a design choice you made to have the open space next to the creek and lots of good reasons for that. Would you be able to, I'm looking for my front yard mod justification, and I was asking questions about that earlier. And I'm seeing that you don't have extra square footage in the front to compensate, as it were, for the mod. You've got the, it's all being used for traffic, for circulation and parking and such. Could you, and I'm not asking you to do this, but just as, again, in my own way of trying to build my rationalization for the mod, you're voluntarily creating this buffer zone in the back, but you could have moved the building or a portion of the building back that direction and still be consistent with policy. Is that true?
That is true.
Would you still have enough area for common open space?
Yes. We could take this whole project and just slide everything back.
Okay.
I have one problem that I would have to resolve, and that is, I'm right up against the Edison easement. But could we tweak that?
But could a massage occurred?
We talked about this in-house, and we also talked about it at ABR, and I think you will see in the ABR minutes. They agreed that the trade-off of staying away from the creek or staying away from the street was better to stay away from the creek. We've got a lot of front yard. And so we kind of, at least I felt, that this was the right thing to do.
Thank you. I think those are my questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Dave, I've got a couple of questions. You described a drainage system that encompassed a catchment tank, a pump system that would pump out into the creek. And my question is, why can't that catchment system be used for irrigation rather than just eliminated?
I don't know. I don't know. It's a 2,500-gallon tank. I was speaking with the civil engineer the other day to understand how the system worked. I suppose that that could happen. I think it's quite likely that for a good portion of the year, there's nothing in that tank. And I think that there might have to be some complicated control system, but I suppose it's possible.
And the other question I had...
That catchment system is detailed on the TM4 sheet of your packet. It's right in here. There's a detail at the bottom, a couple of details at the bottom of the sheet.
I hope I remember it another time, because I've forgotten it. So thank you very mu... Oh, wait. I think we have a couple more. Mr. Thompson?
To follow on to Chairman Myers' question, your catchment system requires a pump to pump it up and then down into the creek. Did you look at just gravity flow? Every time you have a pump, you have a chance for a pump to fail, and then if you needed it, that's probably the time that it would fail, right?
I don't know for sure the answer to that question, but I suspect that you need a pump to get it out of the catchment system into the tank. But I don't know that for sure. It might, it might be possible to gravity flow. I'm sure that the creek is low enough to let that hole happen.
Right. I know the creek would be low enough.
It might be an awfully deep thing.
Kind of like a sump pump in your drainage system, in other words.
Right. Gravity always works, and pumps don't always.
Yeah. That's my point.
Yes.
So that's still being fleshed out to some degree?
Well, I just don't know the answer. We'll certainly pose that to the civil engineer, and if we can do it with gravity, it certainly would be a preferable thing. It certainly would be a deeper hole, but maybe that's...
Well, it's not a big thing from a land use perspective, but it certainly might be in the future to the owners of the property if they're in the midst of a big rainstorm and the pump goes out and now the basement or the parking area is totally flooded.
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Larson?
Thank you very much, Chairman Myers. While you have the site plan area up, can you show us the trash idea, where you're coming and going and where it's located?
It's right there. It's covered. The access to it is that little striped area, and there are four dumpsters on the cover sheet of our package. Down at the lower right-hand corner, there's a calculation of the amount of trash needed, and these four dumpsters fulfill that requirement. For the residents, they'll come through their common corridor and access it right there off this open patio. So they'll come in and use it, and the trash guy goes out that way. There is no residence immediately on top of that thing. There's a roof on top of it. So we've isolated it so that it isn't noisy or smelly, and it's right in the middle. It's readily accessible.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing for this project. We have one public speaker. We've also received one other letter from Paula Westbury. Our public speaker is Paul Hernadi, and I wanted to let you know that we received by email the CPA letter.
Thank you very much.
Earlier in the week.
Yes, we were a little worried because we hoped to get it to you before the site visit, but Julie was away on that day, so somehow the communication got to you, but I'm very glad it did. And I wondered if you also got the letter from the Allied Neighborhood Association, which endorses the CPA letter. So with your indulgence, I, in a sense, speak for both, and perhaps a little longer than two minutes. Thank you for sharing our letter in advance with the applicant, and thank you for taking it so seriously and responding to each or almost every item. I will still summarize our letter, because sometimes our understanding of what we were really concerned about is not exactly what the response would address, but in many cases it did. First of all, I am speaking, Paul Hernadi, for the Citizens Planning Association's South Coast Land Use Committee, and also somewhat for the Allied Neighborhoods Association, which endorses that letter. We are pleased with many features of the project, but urge some reduction in its size so that the project may adhere more fully to the general plan, the municipal code, and the Upper State Street study. I will only summarize the five reasons which both groups that I speak for favor, for which both groups favor, some size reduction. First, we believe that the requested front yard modification is justified with respect to the proposed fountain, but should not be approved for building footprint and parking. Second, we know that the proposed noise mitigation failed to eliminate the energy-consuming need of west-facing units to keep windows closed and rely on mechanical ventilation and air conditioning, especially if the front yard setback modification permits several units to be closer to traffic than they would have been otherwise. We urge through thorough review of the project's impact on traffic. The ATA study, from which an important table was also projected to the screen by Mr. Schell, was dated October 8, 2007, and it estimates a well-over 300% increase of average daily trips from 42 to 142. Just as problematic, the study ignores the project's predictable difficulties with left-turn ingress and agress, or alternative U-turns, given several adjacent or facing parking lot access points nearby and the proximity of the busy State-Hope intersection. Our previously submitted letter describes two additional shortcomings of the study as well, and since they have not really been fully covered in Mr. Schell's response, I would like to read from that letter just two very short sentences. The first one mentions that the study compares the project's traffic generation to the average daily and peak hour trips attributed by the ITE Trip Generation Manual to the generic category furniture store rather than to the relevant site-specific circumstances of existing traffic in the past several years, which do not even amount to the 42 average daily trips which the study attributes to furniture store. And the second sentence speaks about how the study cites figures for the State-Hope intersection from the midweek traffic counts taken from the Upper State Street traffic study in the summer of 2006. Mr. Schell explained that there was a retake of the counts in November, but perhaps not close to Thanksgiving, when the real shopping season starts. And thus discounts the area's heavier traffic on Fridays and during the main shopping season between mid-November and early January. And in this area, of course, this affects not only the afternoon peak hour, but very much prevails between 10:30 and 7:00 at night. And the midday around noon, traffic volume in some instances outstrips the peak hour traffic in the afternoon. Coming back to the third reason, to the fourth of the five reasons, we applaud the provision of a stairway and accessible lift, enabling prospective residents to walk to the adjacent Whole Foods site without a detour over State Street. But we regret the missed opportunity to turn the narrow internal setback between the project and the adjacent mixed-use building into a pedestrian walkway, ultimately connecting Hope Avenue to Hitchcock Way via the stairway and the lift just mentioned. And that was a thing described as desired during the Upper State Street study discussions. Fifth and finally, we ask that the planning commission evaluate the propriety and environmental advisability of double-counting the 35-foot creek buffer as part of the project's required 15% common open space and of counting the flat creek buffer and apparently even part of the sloping bank as part of the applicant's demonstration of meeting the SD2 height requirement. We can't be totally sure about that, but we hope that the planning commission will look into this, especially because in this connection, some of us have also begun to wonder whether the number of units permitted under the variable-density ordinance was determined with due consideration of the existence of Arroyo Burro Creek and its obvious environmental need for a buffer. To sum up, we recognize the project's numerous good qualities. However, we submit that some reduction in size would be in the community's best interest for five main reasons. The reduction could, first, keep buildings and parking spaces from encroaching on required front setbacks. Second, it could situate residential units further from street noise levels, requiring mitigation. Third, it could lessen the project's traffic impact. Fourth, it could enhance pedestrian connectivity. And fifth, it could help observe all applicable laws and regulations. We thank you in advance for your consideration of our concerns, and thank you for the extra minute to you granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no others, a step forward, I will close the public comment hearing for this. Before I bring it back to the commission, Mr. Hernadi had jogged my memory, and I'd like to ask you one more question in regard to the staircase and the logistics of its construction in relation to the Whole Foods project. I understand that if the Whole Foods project does not go through, or if it gets indefinitely postponed, that you will not proceed with the, and your project gets underway and gets towards completion, you will not proceed with the construction of that staircase, correct?
That's right. We worked with the design team of the Whole Foods project, and they did not have a problem with the location of our ending of the stairway. We never got any ownership buy-in, quite frankly, but the design team, this worked for them. This location worked. But in my revised scheme, we would do that irregardless.
Ah.
Because it's, it provides the access that we want up there anyway for our residents.
Okay. Okay. Great. Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question while you're there. Since you were talking with the adjacent property owners, which is that Regency Centers, was there any interest from them in acquiring this property?
I never asked that question. I don't own this property.
They're squeezed in there pretty tight, and since you've now found that your ability to use it is rather limited, I don't know, maybe they want to buy it.
Oh, you mean the fire lane?
Yeah, just the fire lane.
Well, we need the fire lane. We need to have the fire department get to the back of our property. So, no.
No. Okay.
Okay. I'll bring it back to the commission for further comments or further questions and comments. Mr. White?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chair. Let's see. One of them is to, or maybe both to counsel, and that is, is there, does the commission have any ability to limit or eliminate the density transfer option of this project? There will be extra square footage left over... There will be extra square footage left over. It's got 8,000 square feet of, and it's going to be replaced by 1,200 square feet of commercial, so we'll have 6,000 plus square feet of movable commercial square footage. And for example, under the finding of sound community planning, we've been talking about in Plan Santa Barbara, how commercial space is not needed and is just aggravating jobs housing imbalance. So I'm just wondering whether we would have that as an option in this context.
Vincent.
Mr. Chair, I'll, quite honestly, I haven't considered that point. I need to look at the transfer of existing Development Rights Section, Chapter in the Municipal Code. I can review that right now and have an answer in a moment.
Thank you.
I suspect, though, I'll reserve any comment until I finish reading that.
Thank you. And then my other question to council as well is, there's, the street light on the neighboring property, would we, would the Commission have purview to require the head of that to be changed out to a modern standard light fixture?
Could someone tell me where that, which street light are we talking about?
It's 20 feet south.
20 feet south. It's not directly in front of this, oop, that last one had it.
Yeah, there.
There it is. If you turn around, you can see it.
I know the, okay, thank you. I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure if you were talking on the State Street side or, you know. Quite honestly, the point is, is that they're not subdividing or redeveloping that site. They are providing a new five, four-foot wider sidewalk in this location, dedicating the surface rights to this property, to the city for the use of that sidewalk. I think that the public improvements associated with this project are incorporated into it. The redevelopment of this community will occur. It's just, we're, it's, to extend the exactions from the redevelopment of a particular site on a developed street and to start moving down the street looking for one thing or another, there'll always be those kinds of things. They'll get, I would recommend that they get picked up when the Kinko's site is redeveloped, when, if that, if and when that will occur, and it probably will occur at some point, they will be required to expand the sidewalk consistent with the pedestrian master plan as it exists at that time, and I think that would be the appropriate time for that particular Cobra Head to be changed out. I'm not going to tackle the applicant if they wish to do that voluntarily, but I would recommend that the condition not be made from the Commission.
Thank you. Okay, further comments? Shall I move down the line? Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think, you know, this project is certainly doing most everything right, and the only apparent modification really is to accommodate the pedestrian master plan, and that in itself has created the front yard modification. There's different ways of handling that. We could leave it alone and have more creek setback, as has been discussed by the applicant as perhaps being the beneficial approach. We could push the building back and say, okay, it complies on all fronts, but we've lost open space in the creek. I think, I would like to hear from other Commissioners. I would prefer to leave the building where it is and perhaps in exchange for the four-foot front yard modification, have the ability in the future to have a public path along the creek, should the adjoining properties in the future provide their chunks, so that maybe it doesn't happen now, but we've got it built in that when the other ones develop, that then we can start linking them together. So I would be inclined to approve the modification if we can make a linkage for the future public path in the creek buffer. I would also recommend to the applicant that we could designate the open space, the 20 by 20, that you had flagged in the creek buffer, and actually put that now into the shortened fire lane finger that is also 20 feet wide, so that we don't have the open space in the buffer, which was one of the comments that we saw in CPA's letter as well. The only other advantage of maybe moving the building back to avoid the modification is that we're so close to meeting the decibel level, we may not have to do the sound protection on the windows, but I would prefer to have the linkage for a trail and open space. We're only two decibels over the city's limit on the decibel requirement, and if Plan Santa Barbara moves ahead, I know it's, right now, alternatively set that that's going to go up to 65 decibels, which is the state standard, and we would clearly be in compliance. So I'm inclined to support the modification in exchange for a commitment for a future public connection, should the adjoining properties be able to add on to that. I like the project for many other reasons. I think, you know, the unit sizes are exemplary. Hopefully, we see other projects that follow suit. Having more than the required affordable units is good attribute. Most all, the parking is underground, so it's giving us most everything that we always have to beg for, and here it's handed to us on a plate. So I commend the applicant on that, and I do think that the realignment of the driveway and access is going to improve the circulation in the area. And I think it was noble that they didn't use, you know, a lot of the pre-existing bank uses to threshold on traffic. That property's been a lot of things over the years, and so I'm not concerned about the circulation portion, but I would like to take the applicant up on the offer of foreshortening the fire lane, creating the additional open space and stairway. And if the other project goes ahead, at that point, a lift could be included, but at this point, I don't even see that the lift is necessary, so. You have to? Okay. He's volunteering, so I guess we get a lift as well. As far as the conditions of approval that were brought forward by the landscape architect, I think I would prefer to keep the ones that we have in place. The only one that I might be able to relax on is perhaps the oak seedlings, if they want to use them off-site rather than onsite. I don't think that that should be an issue. I mean, we're actually removing paving on the project. We're not removing oak trees that I can see. We're not even doing work in the areas where the seedlings would be, so unless I'm missing something, I don't understand where that would be an issue for this project. So I would like to keep that condition. I think all the conditions as we have them. So I look forward to hearing from others.
Thank you, Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For starters, I think Mr. Bartlet's comments are spot-on. I think this is a very well-designed project, and I like the direction and the creativity that the applicant's team has used to kind of generate a win-win situation on this, on the end of this fire access piece regarding the placement of the structure in relationship to the setbacks to the street versus the setbacks to the creek. Again, I'm in full agreement with Mr. Bartlet's approach. I think there are additional water quality benefits that accrue from the way this thing has been designed. Regarding the connection to the Whole Foods thing, I think that was thoughtful and opportunistic. At the same time, this connection to Whole Foods does not satisfy what I would like to see the Whole Foods connection be across the creek to the Cumber Plaza. That's not this project's responsibility, but I wanted to go on record for saying that. And I can make the findings for the modifications. I'm a little hesitant on the parking issue, but I'm sure I'll be educated on that based on the comments from the rest of the Commission. My one concern is, is not for the project, but for the amount of time we have taken to discuss a project that is basically a well-designed project. We allow the applicant to, or should you say, the Chair allowed the applicant to take over 40 minutes to make a presentation. When you put it all together with staff's comments, we should have been able to do this in 20 minutes altogether. This is not rocket science. This is good planning, and I am very, very frustrated by the amount of time it takes to introduce a project when we, as Planning Commissioners, have read the staff report, made a site visit, give thoughtful consideration to the project, and I think ask smart questions. But I think this moving away from our 15-minute guideline, particularly in a project like this where there is limited public concern, albeit legitimate, I think is a bad precedent to set.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I agree with many of the points that have been made so far. I think that this is a good, a very good project, particularly from the standpoint of unit size. I'm grateful that this ripple is starting to go through the pond, and I really do appreciate that. And there hasn't been comment made about the additional affordable unit which is being provided here as well, and that's a good thing. I'll just say, I agree with the comments about the comment about the shifting. That's, I was, that's what I needed to hear, was that this project could get moved, and so we're not just gobbling into the public space to make the building bigger. We have another way to build on this property that's consistent with policy, so I can support the mod, the front yard mod. I'm not so happy about the front yard parking. I don't like it. It's just, that isn't, that isn't, there's, the weakest place in this project from my perspective is the parking in the front yard. If the common, when you have a project of this size and you have common open space, my feeling is it needs to be available for active use by the occupants. It's, it just, Ms. Jacobs made comments about there may be children here. Whether or not there are children here, the child in all of us needs a place to be outside, and if it's a bench, if it's a, you know, something, a nice little place to be. I feel like in this spot, and always with riparian corridors, there's that tension between trying to do natural planning and make it for people, and I tend to put the people first and design around that to the best ability, obviously ideally with yet even more space, but at least I would be advocating for a, the common use of the common open space, active common use. Also, what I like is that this project has less commercial square footage going back in than is there now. Also, on the traffic, I think that the traffic is fine. I think you could go back and use the bank traffic analysis. I think it'd be very reasonable to use something besides the furniture store, because this property isn't restricted in its use, and it has that historical use. So I'm fine with the traffic analysis and the trip generations that are shown to occur. So I'm also, I'm supportive of the landscape architects' requests for changes to the conditions of approval. I see no harm in either of those. And I'll be looking, interested to hear what my colleagues, the rest of my colleagues have to say. Oh, and then the density transfer question is out there again. I think this would be, it would be an interesting shift in our, the way we've handled this, to just assume that the applicant gets the right to sell this square footage. So I'd appreciate any comments that others have to say there. It clearly, as we've talked about in Plan Santa Barbara, we're trying to head away from more commercial development, and this may be an opportunity to implement it on a project basis if our council would give us guidance that we had the legal right to do so. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could speak to that right now. I've had a chance to read the chapter for transfer of existing development rights. And while, while the chapter anticipates a level of discretion by the Planning Commission, the way it implements that discretion is that at the time that the square footage is transferred, the Planning Commission must make certain findings and shall not grant the transfer unless it makes those findings. In particular, the Planning Commission or the City Council on appeal would have to make the finding that the proposed development plan for both the sending site and the receiving site are consistent with the goals and objectives of the general plan in the municipal code. A fairly common finding that you make, that the proposed developments will not be detrimental to the sites, neighborhood, or surrounding areas. The floor area of the proposed non-residential development on the receiving site does not exceed the sum basically allowed under Measure E. That the proposed non-residential development on the respective sending site and receiving site will meet all standards for review as set forth under Measure E. And that the development remaining or to be built on a sending site is appropriate in size, scale, and configuration for the neighborhood. The way I see these findings is that the city created the existing, the transfer ability for some purposes, and that those findings are there to balance against the purposes and to assure that the purposes of the transfer do not conflict with our sound community planning. They lay out the purposes on the flip side, and the reason why I want to state these is so the Commission understands the transfer of existing development rights was established by the city to create flexibility within the existing built environment. It's not, the existing rights, the existing square footage, is not an expansion of the Measure E square footage. It's existing square footage. It's already counted within the calculation, and it doesn't count towards the remaining build-out. It's already assumed as part of the existing environment. And so I just, when considering what the Commission wishes to do about this, the purposes announced in the chapter include to ensure a strong economy, to encourage new development, but not new floor area, to promote efficient use of used space and the creative reuse of existing buildings, encourage uses compatible with surrounding areas, provide flexibility and opportunities for redirecting growth within the growth cap, encourage the development of a balanced community with economic diversity, stimulate revitalization of existing commercial areas, accommodate large-scale development that's consistent with Measure E, and encourage the construction of housing. So with, with reading all of this, I think it, I would suggest this, I would suggest if the Commission is concerned about the transfer of the remaining square footage from this property, I would recommend that the Commission put into your resolution a statement regarding your concerns about the project, a statement regarding the concerns about how this square footage might end up or where it would go, but with the understanding, with the purpose, that future Commissions who would have to consider those findings before allowing the transfer of those development credits would have the benefit of your consideration of this project as being one of the two balances, one of the two, the transfer process has the Planning Commission considering both projects. And so today, you're getting one of the projects. In the future, another Commission will be dealing with the receiving project, and I think that that Commission at that point would benefit from your understanding of this project and how it's considered today when making their decision in the future. I don't see where we can prohibit the transfer, but I think that having this Commission's thoughts about this project as one of the two that would be involved in such a transfer would be useful for the future Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My comments about this project include, I'm appreciative of the distribution of the affordables throughout the project, not locating them in like one spot on one floor. I think that's very commendable. I think that, that's very commendable. I appreciate the unit sizes, they're very reasonable, and I agree with Commissioner White that it seems like we're being heard, and that's wonderful. I appreciate that, for the residents who live there, that the bedrooms are facing the creek and not, not the street. So over time, that will be a blessing to the people inside. I do believe that the linkage to the creek buffer with the public pedestrian access is important, and we need to think ahead to circulation through that area. This is, as Commissioner Justice said, and as Commissioner Bartlet, this is a wonderful project. It, it really responds to what we've been talking about. It has many fine features. I still don't know quite where that barbecue's going to go. I always look for that, for when people gather, but I'm very much in support of it. Regarding the transfer of development rights, I would be comfortable with some draft language in this that, that would link it to a future project, link those rights to the next project, as Mr. Vincent said. I'm not a great language composer, but, but I, I think that that's right on, that if we made our comments so that, so that the use of the space and the compatibility of the square footage to the area, and, you know, like I said, I'm not a great language drafter, but I, I think that we can't say no to that in this application. The other thing is regarding the request of the landscape architect. I don't have a problem with his requests. I think they're reasonable. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Chair Myers. First, I want to thank Commissioner Justice for stating what may have been on many of our minds about the length of the presentation. It was overkill, and it was long, and I'm sure we all wanted to get to the good news, which is how much we want to tell you how much we like this project. You don't have to tell us as much as you did. This project really gets it. I like it very much. I'm fully in support of it. It has an attractive design, and it is not overly aggressive. In fact, it is generous with its site, generous with the creek buffer, generous with meeting the SD2 setbacks, really kind of almost a humble kind of a project, given what it could have been like and what other projects we've seen in this area have been like. So I, I like it very much. In the Upper State Street Design Guidelines, there is no design guideline for this area, and there's a little sentence in Courier typeface on a many times memegraph sheet that simply says, "New developments in this area should try and set a new standard for the design of the area." And I think this does that. It takes the SD2 setback and uses it in a very attractive way. So thank you for bringing it to us. A few comments. The ABR continued to look for some kind of pedestrian connection through this property, and I've heard other commissioners talk about it originally. I agreed with that, but after thinking about it and wondering where would people actually be going if they're walking in and through and around, it doesn't seem to have a good enough payback. It's a private piece of property, and it's just a few paces away from a street corner. So I, I'm not as supportive of that as I, as the ABR may have been. I very much like your new proposal for the use of the fire lane area and how that can become a little pocket space for the residents that live there, and maybe a little bit of open space relief for the area in general. We don't know how the adjacent property is ultimately going to be developed, and we know what, what has been proposed for the Taco Bell site, but times can change. So I like what you have proposed for the, for that space. But I would like to see better design consideration of the rear open space along the creek, and also of what actually goes into this, this fire lane area, which doesn't quite have a name yet, and how that becomes active recreational common space for the people that live in this building, whether it's, well, we've seen some beautiful projects come through with fire pits and outdoor furniture and planters and barbecues, just really imaginative outdoor living spaces that are attractive and usable for the people that live in these units. And because you have a spectacular setting on a creekside, which is going to be even more beautiful with Mr. Cunningham's restoration, really think some more, and I'll hope to see this in a condition that when it goes to ABR again, and they're, they're looking at the landscape plan, that the uses by the residents are considered and improved from what they are, what we see today. Regarding the transfer development rights, I'll chime in on that. Personally, I'm not comfortable with encumbering the property owner of this site with limitations on their development rights when it has not gone through due process in the general plan. So I, I would not be able to support that. I suppose some limited language could be drafted to go into the conditions, but I, I am not comfortable with encumbering this property owner and his development rights as they exist without having a larger discussion through the general plan process. And when we get to the conditions of approval, I'd like to see the maintenance specifically call out that the CCNRs will be maintaining the creek buffer zone as well as the courtyard areas. And then lastly, just as a comment, and this relates to the general plan also, but we, we don't have a city parks standard. And if we did, this would be a great project to use as an example. We have 16 units going in, many of which will probably have people who would like to be using a park. This is an area that doesn't have a neighborhood park, and we don't have a park standard in the city, so we can't say that this does or does not meet the findings, the necessary findings for parks, because we don't have a standard, such as what other communities have that have a certain walking distance from an area, say a quarter mile or half a mile to a neighborhood park, or a figure that takes per capita and, and square footage of parks areas. So just again, I said it before, and I probably say it every time a project like this comes forward, that the city needs a park standard, and the sooner the better, because we're losing opportunities to incorporate that into, into our development standards and our, our project conditions of approval. So thank you very much for, for bringing this project forward and for your sensitivity to the uptown neighborhood, and good luck with it.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like my fellow commissioners, I support the project. I think it's a well-designed project with moderate unit sizes, with a lot of good features, such as underground parking. As Mr. White pointed out, it also has a good impact on something that we've been focusing on recently, and that's the ratio between commercial and residential square footage. And I understand and agree with Mr. White's point about transfer of development rights, but I don't think it would be appropriate for us to encumber a future planning commission that may be faced with a project request with a whole different set of circumstances. So I personally would not support putting anything into this project that would encumber future planning commissioners' ability to look at the conditions at that time. I support the mod for the density, and I support the modification for the front setback. It's a good trade-off with the additional area in the back along the creek. Mr. Bartlet's idea for potential future public pathway along the top of the creek bank is a, is a good idea to have in abeyance if that were ever something that might be practical. So I would be in support of some language to that effect, that at some point in the future, there may be consideration for a pathway through there. As far as Mr. Cunningham's request regarding the oak tree landscaping issues, I would suggest rewording that sentence on the oak tree protection measures to say that any irrigation system that may be installed under the drip line of any oak tree shall be designed in coordination with an arborist. And I would support removing the other condition regarding oak seedlings, because for one thing, I don't think we're going to really find many oak seedlings that would even be impacted. But it is in an urban area, and with the renovation going on on the creek, in the bank of the creek, I don't see that planting more oak seedlings is going to be needed. And quite frankly, if somebody needs oak seedlings, they're welcome to come to my yard and get all the oak seedlings that they want. So I support the project.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I don't know what more I could add. I also support the project. I want to reiterate a couple of things, because I think they are important. This common open space is, in particular, I, like others, really see this common open space as being something that, that enhances the project and it's, enhances the, the outdoor living use by the residents of the project. So having it as wildland, I think that, that's commendable in some parts, but I think a reasonable area needs to be dedicated to some of the suggestions that have been bantered about here. I would like to see some, some more research into the water catchment system and how that might be able to be used for at least partial landscaping. I don't want a sophisticated system to, to impede the project, but I can see where it could water planters rather than the open space landscaping, things like that. So, so I'd like to see a little bit of research there. And I, I fully support Mr. Bartlet's ideas and, and others who have, who approve of the, the modification of the front yard setback in favor of this possible trail that may come in the future. And also just, I think just the way the aesthetics of the building sit on, to, to the face of the street footage, I think that it, as it sits now, I think it sits well and, and is easily supportable. I really appreciate the attention to unit sizes. I think that is really remarkable, and is one of the things that I, I wanted to hear more of in discussion, and was hoping that maybe your presentation really paid a lot more attention to as an example for this area. I think that, and let me address this issue about the length of your presentation. It was long, and I feel a bit hoodwinked in the request that it, that it be extended and that it, that it did run so long. And, and given our schedule being a little bit more tight today, it probably would have been cut short. But it is a project that is in, in an area that has, is, is under scrutiny, and I think that this project is such a good example of what needs to be developed in this area, that some of the projects coming forward, hearing your, your, your presentation was worthwhile. And so I, I let it go to its full extent. And I, I want to remind the commission that it is the prerogative of the chair to allow these things to go as far as they go, and that the only, the, the only precedent that may be in jeopardy here is that challenge to that prerogative. So with that, I'll look forward to a motion. Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, I'd like to try to tackle this issue of the TEDR findings and the issues that Mr. White raised and Mr. Vincent has clarified. I think it might be worthwhile to provide the applicant with the flexibility that I hear a number of members on the commission wanting to preserve, yet at the same time communicating a special concern that the planning commission may have regarding the jobs housing imbalance, and how transferring those development credits into non-residential units is not going to help that situation. And what I'm thinking about is, is a motion that approves the project and indicates that future interpretation of the findings regarding TEDRs give full consideration to the jobs housing imbalance at the time of that TEDR's sending sites evaluation, something to that effect, in terms of finding consistency with the land use element and the housing element of the general plan. What I'm trying to do is just memorialize the current situation that we have here with the, both the housing element and the existing land use element, and whatever is in place after Santa Barbara, Plan Santa Barbara at some point in the future, if another, if this comes through at that point, that we just underline our concerns about the jobs housing balance issue. And I'm wondering if that generally addresses the concerns of, of my colleagues on the commission, to be generic but communicative about our concerns on the TEDR issue.
Mr. Thompson?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I would agree with that. Basically, we're not doing anything other than, if we did what Commissioner Justice was suggesting, we're not doing anything other than just highlighting for future consideration that we think is a point worth highlighting. So I would be able to support that. I don't think it impacts anything.
Ms. Jacobs, do you have anything to, I know that you had your...
Well, I would, I would have to base support on actual language. I would, I do not want to encumber this property. However, if we are simply communicating to the future transfer, send, sending site and receiving site dialogue, we could do that, but I, it would, it would be kind of a jester, but I would not be wanting to encumber this property.
Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I like some of the ideas contained in that thought, but the way I look at it would be, where would be a more appropriate place to put that commercial space? Not that it should just evaporate and be gone, but is there a more appropriate place to put that commercial footage? And to me, it relates really to, you know, traffic and infrastructure and pedestrian connectivity. So if we could find a site that has less impacted intersections, this is one of the worst in the city, then that would certainly be a plus. Or if it's near transit line, or other things. So I think there might be some, a list of things that we would like to see as being better locations for that particular commercial footage, rather than just taking the footage off the table. So that would be my input.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Vincent? Having heard the, the concerns and comments of the commission, and listening to them as I'm looking at the findings that your future commission that would consider such a transfer have to make, I think many of your concerns are already wrapped into the findings that that future commission will have to make, and that since that commission will have to consider both the development plan for this project, as it, and basically how the project's working at that point, as well as the future project. It encompasses Commissioner Bartlet's concerns about appropriate site planning, resources available at the future, at the receiving location and so forth. So having heard the commission's concerns, I think that the transfer chapter has already set up a process for those concerns to be addressed, considered, and requiring a positive finding before the transfer could occur. So I, I'm not sure what else, what more we would add to this process at this point by going any further at that, with this idea.
Thank you. Mr. Cutter?
Chair Myers, I was going to say something, something similar, but not quite so eloquent. Chairman, I was going to say something, something similar, but not quite so eloquent, I guess. You know, the way that the transfer of existing development rights process is supposed to work is when we, when we wrote it, we envisioned that the both sites would come in together, right? You'd have a dilapidated old building, and then you'd have this other site that needed the square footage. And the reason that we wanted to look at them together is because we wanted to make sure that what was left on the sending site was something, something nice, which just wasn't the weed-strewn vacant lot. So what you're doing here is you're, instead of, instead of looking at two, you're looking at the sending site, and by approving the sending site, you are essentially sending a message to the future commission saying what they've done here in the sending site is great. And then it's really going to be up to the future commission to look at the receiving site and say, is this appropriate location for this square footage? Does it, does it have pedestrian-friendly access? Is it a place where there's no traffic impacts, et cetera, et cetera? All those findings that have to be made. So, you know, by, by, I mean, if there was a way to restrict these square footage, all you would do is say that it would be going away and it couldn't be used by anybody else in any other circumstance, which I don't, that wasn't the purpose. That's the exact opposite to what the purpose was. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
There was a lot of discussion earlier, or some discussion earlier about the length of the presentation. I would submit that we've spent much more time discussing about 6,000 square feet of potential transfer development in the future, that, much more than it needs. So I would suggest we move along.
Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My last request would be to strengthen condition F2 that deals with archaeological resources, to make sure that that condition has an archaeological monitor on site during grading. It's implied, but, but I'm not sure that it's really there. And I, I say that because I'm concerned about surrounding properties having been developed and discovered archaeological resources on site. It would be good to have somebody looking at that when the grading happens.
Chairman Myers, Commissioner Justice, after our side visit, we did, we read archaeological reports on the surrounding areas, and part of the reason why the conclusion came back that there probably wouldn't be any resources found was, especially on the corner of Hope and State, that was a vacant lot with no paving on it, so they were able to dig into that and take a look at that, and they didn't find any resources. Number two, in looking at the history of this site back before it was developed in the 1950s, it was used as an orchard, and there was a lot of terracing that occurred up and down of that area. So the archaeologists, both on the corner of State and Hope, as well as on 15 South Hope, felt pretty confident that the resources, there probably wouldn't be resources found. And they did consider what was going on in the surrounding area and what resources were found.
I withdraw my request.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to take a quick straw poll regarding the other two conditions regarding the oak saplings and the drip, the oak drip line, taking up Mr. Thompson's suggestion that we rewrite item two B1 to include Arborist guidelines and, and to strike the other one, which was...
G15B sub five.
Thank you. G15B sub five.
Chairman Myers?
Yes.
One thing I could offer for you is that since we have a city arborist, I could, the opening line of, say, two B could be in consultation with the city arborist, the following provisions may apply to existing oak trees on site. And our city arborists could work together to determine what the appropriate final plan should look like in terms of mitigations or conditions for the oak tree protection that we want to offer.
Is there any discussion regarding that? Mr. Thompson?
Well, I still prefer the wording that I put in there because what Peter is saying still starts out saying it may be with the city arborist and still would have the words in there that irrig, any irrigation system will be so and so. It's very prescriptive, and I think that it could be misinterpreted in the future. So that's the reason why I would prefer the wording that I suggested.
Well, right now, I'm just looking to any objection to, or discussion. Is there any objection? Well, Mr. Lawson, is, are you guys on the same page pretty much? I mean, I'm pretty much hearing the same thing.
Yes, we are. I, by hearing Commissioner Thompson's saying is that we have more of a conditional type of situation as opposed to a shall.
Yes.
So anywhere with those, that prescriptive, as you stated, then we go more to a conditional situation in review of the plans.
Okay. Okay, so is there any objection or, maybe I should say, is any, all in favor of that language replacing the current language? Please say aye. Aye. Looks like we have unanimous and all in favor of striking the aforementioned, take me through this again. The seedling condition. Let me just put it that way. All in favor of striking that? Aye, all, it's unanimous. So I'll look for a motion that includes those changes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
While we're, while we're discussing changes to the conditions, based on the conversation that the commission has had so far about the common open area, I believe we need to have a discussion of the scope of, or even the continued existence of condition A, I'm sorry, let's see, I'm sorry, B9. It's a development rights restriction on that common open area, which was drafted with the intent of essentially keeping it as a, as a, a no, a no-person zone. And that's basically inconsistent with the considerations of the planning commission.
We're on page, yeah, page three of 17 at the bottom, item number nine, development rights restrictions. Mr. Lawson, do you have any, or Mr. Cotto, do you have any suggestions for language that might reflect the wishes of the commission? Mr. White?
Mr. Chair, I think we can, we can just make it as part of our conditions that there shall, this commission wants to see a common open space that is, that has an active use component and that the staff, that the applicant shall work with ABR to develop one. And then the remaining open space, natural areas could have a restriction of, in the way it's used.
Mr. Cotto?
Would that not get us from here to there?
Mr. Cotto?
Thank you, Chairman Myers. I was thinking for that B9 that we could maybe restrict within the creek bank, the creek bank area only, instead of the 35 feet back from the creek bank, which is the usable area, potentially usable area. And then for, and then give the ABR some direction in condition A3, which talks about adequate usable common open space shall be provided.
Okay, so who would like to craft a motion? Ms. Jacobs, thank you.
I'll start it off. Chairman Myers, I move that the commission approve the project, making the findings outlined in section seven of this report and subject to the conditions of approval in exhibit A with the following additions to the conditions of approval, which is exhibit A. First, that we shall delete item G15B sub five, which is oak tree protection regarding seedlings, and that we shall change the language in A2B sub one to include that any irrigation shall be installed in consultation with an arborist. We shall also change item A3, usable common space. Mr. Cotto, did you have language for how you might do that? I was looking at the other one, the one that Mr. Vincent drew our attention to, which is B9. B9 talks about an area being restricted, so I think what we're trying to do here is to define, to make a definition between what is common open space and what is restricted area.
Chairman Myers, Ms. Jacobs, I don't actually have any exact language, but I would, I would think that you want to put something like, within the 35-foot buffer area, which is the flatter area, you'd want some decomposed granite pathways and perhaps a play area, something like.
Mr. Chair, may I make a recommendation?
Thank you.
Please.
And this is just following on, along Mr. Cotto's idea. I believe I, what, balancing what you're looking for in both the usable area as well as having some kind of creek protection buffer, I would have the design review condition A3 advise the, or recommend that the ABR redesign or look at a redesign of this open space area in the rear of the property with an eye towards balancing a usable area where appropriate and a resource protection area where appropriate. Don't know where, I can't give you a contour line or anything like that right now. And that B9, the development rights restriction, would apply to the portion of the area that the ABR designates as the restricted area.
Exactly.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Vincent.
So that, that will be clearly defined. Thank you, Ms. Vincent. Also adding the condition that the applicant will incorporate a common landscaped area into the northern side of the property, which is also a fire lane, such that the fire department needs are met and the remaining area becomes landscaped and usable by the residents, and that the lane and landscaped area incorporate permeable paving. This would be under a design review for, for review with the ABR. And lastly, that, that as part of describing the creek setback, that provisions for a future trailway be made such that at some future time, when adjacent properties are able to link up and provide a future pathway along the creek, as, as Mr. Bartlett stated, that, that that provision be made in the design of the creek area.
Project and modifications?
Oh, that, yeah, that the findings, well, the findings are made and that the commission approves the modifications to allow encroachment into the front setback and modification two to allow the over-density units in the SD2 zone, and that we make the findings for the tenant-to-subdivision map.
Second that motion.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries seven zero. We have a project, this is appealable to City Council within 10 days. Thank you. Okay, this takes us to our administrative agenda. We have committee and liaison reports. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple. I went to the Water Commission meeting, and a couple of items came up there this week that are of interest to the Planning Commission. One, the survey of Gibraltar was completed, and as a result of the siltation from the Zaccaffare, we have lost about 21% of the capacity compared to last year. It's about 1,500 acre feet less than it was last year. So the Gibraltar reservoir is down to a capacity of about 5,000 acre feet. So it's filling up as per Commissioner White's predictions. The hydroelectric study feasibility analysis that Mr. White's been asking about is underway. It would be, if it does become feasible and could be worked out, the idea would be to power the Cater Treatment Plant, and if there was any surplus power generated, they would have to determine how to get it to wherever it might be used. Also, a contract for the water resources study is underway and should be to staff by the end of the year so the staff can produce a water resources study, which will be an integral part of our general plan update process. And since the water year has just completed, of interest is the fact that we use slightly more than planned, but less than, 2007. This year, we used about 14,700 acre feet of water, which was a little bit over the plan of 14,000, but it's less than the 15-plus that was used in '07. So that's the water board. I went to the Airport Commission meeting last night, and a couple of items there that are of interest to the Planning Commission are the rental car lot that we approved last year is in work, and low and behold, they discovered an unknown abandoned underground tank, 25,000 gallons in size, and they've finally gotten it removed and everything taken care of, and work is back under, on, working towards getting on schedule. But that was an unplanned addition to the workload. And the terminal, the new terminal, phase one work on the ramp is done. Phase two, they've selected a contractor, but it's now on hold because the city can't get the bond financing going through with the current credit tightness, and they're holding, waiting until their appropriate time for issuing the bonds to put the contractor on, on work. That's to do the modifications to the entry road and so forth to get ready for the terminal construction. And meanwhile, the plans are being finalized for the terminal itself so that when the financing climate gets right, they'll be able to start it as soon as possible. Long-term parking will be ready to go. They're in the process of setting that up at the alternate site so that the long-term parking and the current long-term parking lot, which, as you know, will be combined for short term and a little bit of long term, that'll all be ready to go. So that may be implemented before the end of the year. So those are two, two different committee meetings that were of interest. And the only other thing I might mention, I know Mr. Catto sent out an email per my request, but I was talking to a member of the Coastal Commission, and the Marina Drive project was appealed to the Coastal Commission after it lost its appeal at the City Council, and that is tomorrow, tomorrow morning in Ventura. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Review of the decisions of the staff here. Officer, Mr. White?
I have nothing on that today, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And we have a number of minutes. We've gone over a number of them. Ms. Larson, you weren't here for that, but let me explain to you some of the things that did occur during this. The draft minutes of August 14th, September 10th, and September 11th, all having to do with the Plan Santa Barbara work sessions are being suspended for, for better and more thorough review. We've gone over the April 7th minutes, but if you have something to add, we can, we can entertain them at this time.
Mr. Chair, I thank you for your thoughtful allowing me to, to submit corrections, even though I know you labored at the lunch meeting. I did give careful review of the draft Santa Barbara...
I did give careful review of the draft Santa Barbara, but I'll hold on to that until, so I have a couple of minor, wait a minute, I haven't got them marked. For which, August 14th, you said you held, you're holding?
We're at April 7th.
April 7th. I believe I just have, on April 7th, on page eight, item nine, peak oil, it's just a spelling error, P, okay, you got that? Okay. And then there's a fragment sentence, fragmented sentence in the last of the same item, "The unintended consequences of building, of limiting heights in the city, such as driving out open space and setback possibilities." Period. So I, I thought that that could use some grammatical revision, and I believe that's all I had for that, for that, for the seventh.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you very much for allowing me to...
Not at all. That brings us to the draft minutes of September 18th, which we have yet to review at all. I'll look for changes. Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chairman Myers. I do have one change on page five, down towards the bottom, paragraph number two. It reads now, "One commissioner expressed concern over the construction of the concrete slab." If we could elaborate that a bit, the concern over the tension cable construction method of the concrete slab, there's a very specific kind of construction that I was questioning there, and in particular, its suitability for residential, residential buildings. So I would add, this technique is not easily compatible with residential construction.
Mr. Chairman, on page six, under the motion, it talked about funding the purchase of a streetlight fixture. It says decorative streetlight fixture. I think it should be city standard streetlight fixture.
Mr. Vincent?
I do have one suggested change on page 10, just above the motion. It says, I said something, and then it doesn't say anything else. And what I did there was provide a summary of the commission discussion in motion regarding 1930 El Camino de la Luz prior to the adoption of the minutes. There was a question amongst commissioners of how exactly that had passed. Then we'll move on to resolution 035-08, a 10 Bond Avenue in 516 North Noble. Anything regarding resolution? Resolution 03, Mr. White?
Mr. Chair, on page four, item nine, "The residents of the real property and the guests shall not participate in the residential permit parking program." There isn't one there now. So, and I, and maybe that, it just, that's how one would refer to the whole city program in general, but my understanding is it isn't implemented there now. So anyway, somehow, maybe that could be clarified, that if there is a residential permit parking program there in the future, that, then the local, those, those folks wouldn't be able to participate.
Anything else? Resolution 036-08, Mission Creek from Highway 101 to the ocean. Okay. Recognizing that we are suspending the draft minutes of August 14th, September 10th, September 11th, 2008, do I hear a motion to approve the amended minutes of April 7th, 2008, the draft minutes of September 18th, 2008, resolution 035-08, and resolution 036-08?
So move?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries seven zero.